How do you view this potentially, it is a potentially very dangerous situation, I might, am I wrong? No, you're right, I mean, John, he's under. Escape from the river and say, what's going on? I mean, we look up to the United States.
Can you add Commissioner Rivlin or is he on?
He, I've just been added, so someone did, thank you.
Ah, okay.
For some reason, I'm not getting the authorized links and I just joined the public link whenever that happens.
Well, that's good thinking.
Um, I had some trouble jo- um, logging in, but I'm on now, but I'm just gonna need a minute.
Sure, that's fine, Maggie. Folks, we're just waiting for our commissioners to arrive here on a second and we'll, we'll be starting. Hey, Maggie, I have to, uh.
Yep, I'm here.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from the second item.
Oh yeah, why is that?
Uh, I have before, I would cross the street.
Oh.
So, uh, you'll have to gavel, so to speak, for that one.
Okay.
When I mention it, so, I'll, I'll bring it up in the meeting.
Thanks. No problem.
So I think we're waiting for Commissioners Colville and Bookbinder.
Mr. Chair, I just saw an email, he said he didn't receive the, uh, commission link. Let me try to respond to him.
Who, who was that though, Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Colville.
You have our IT administrator on, Ryan, could you, uh, actually just resend the links to Zoom to all of the commissioners again, real quickly? And just, just seeing the, the faces in the crowd tonight, um, if your item isn't up yet, and it just is a courtesy, if you want to mute yourself or maybe turn off your camera, you can, you so at your discretion.
We have, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder, oh.
Hello.
There he is.
Invite, and, uh, I just spent the last five minutes trying to join the wrong Zoom meeting because I accidentally opened the city council agenda. So, that's my mistake, but I'm here now. Hopefully I did not miss anything.
We're waiting for Commissioner Colville to log in. Which he, I know he's doing. Well, we know Commissioner Colville's logging in. Now, let's wait one more minute here.
Mr. Chair, he just sent another email saying still no, uh, no link, I, I sent a text message to, uh, Ryan asking for him to send it, so, we may just want to start this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, well.
Can he join as, sorry.
You may have him, if, if he has a city email address, are they sending it to a city address? Because I find sometimes my link is under the other tab instead of the.
Most city addresses.
Tab.
No, we don't have the city addresses, Bill.
No, okay, well then forget what I just said.
We might advise him to sign in as a pub, member of the public and then authorize him, I, that's what I've had to do in the fa- past few times.
Well, in any case, uh, let's call to, uh, to order the, uh, November 10th, 2020, meeting of the Campbell Planning Commission. And, uh, Corinne, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, Commissioners Bookbinder.
Present.
Ding.
Yes.
Rivlin.
Present.
Commissioner Resister.
Here.
Sheriff Strowski.
Here.
Sheriff Craig.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Colville's not yet here.
And he'll be coming in in a minute, and I have to say that this planning commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication. It is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and executive order N dash. It is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-29-20 issued by the Governor. As everybody had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting, October 27th.
I have an, a small correction to make on page 11. At the bottom, it says Commissioners Zissler asked staff if it is comment for cities to do this, that should read common. Just a nitpick.
Okay, we'll make that correction. But he have a motion then, with that correction?
Oh, I, I'm gonna be abstaining.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve for the minutes, subject to Commissioner Bookbinder's correction.
Is there a second? There's a second by Commissioner Bookbinder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any, any knows? One, one abstention, Commissioner Ostrowski? So the minutes pass. Director Kamoyan, do we have any communications for the commission, or any agenda modifications or changes?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Does any of the commissioners have any disclosures before we start? Because-
I don't have to recuse myself, but I live somewhat near the 27 Oklahoma, item four, I live about 2,000 feet away.
Okay, well, that's fine.
In my neighborhood.
I actually do have, on item number two, the Starbright School, I live within 500 feet, so I'm across the street from that school, so I will have to recuse myself from item number two. And I do see we have a few people here, but not too many, so we'll just go in order of the agenda. So for item number two, then we'll, we'll pass the baton over to Commissioner Ostrowski for that one. And right now, then, we'll begin with item number one of our agenda. Item number one is a public hearing to consider the application of a mandatory for a site and architectural review permit, PLN-2020-29, to allow for the construction of a 39,004, 3904, 3,904 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on property located at 1508 Teresa Avenue, in the R18 Single Family Residential Zoning District. And our planner is Stephen Rose.
Good evening, Chair Craig, members of the Planning Commission. So the project site is a 9,400 square foot lot, located on the west side of Teresa Avenue, between Chapman Drive and West Par Avenue. The property is owned R18, and located in the Santa Moss area neighborhood, and the site is currently developed with an existing two-story, single-family home, a detached guest house, and several sheds, which are all proposed to be moved. The applicant's request is for the construction of a 3,900 square foot, two-story, single-family residence. And even with the inclusion of a new interior ADU on the ground floor, the project would stay under the maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage of the R18 Zone District. Those residents uses traditional color, materials, and forms, including the combination of hip and gray, hip and gray composition shingle roofing, which will help achieve design principles of the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, and the totality with the greater neighborhood. In consideration of the applicant's proposal, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the applicant's request, and this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank, thank Stephen, any questions for Stephen? If there's no questions, I, I think there was, I think Sark looked at this item, is there a Sark report?
Yes, Chair Craig, we, we viewed it, was supportive of the application, it looks very nice, it looks, it looked really nice, fitting in with the neighborhood. I think it, excuse me, replaces an existing two-story building. So it's not as though it's a new, new two-story in place of a, a single story, I believe, but we had no real issues, we supported.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Ching, and then I, I guess at this point, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing, and does the applicant wish to address the Planning Commission?
Hello, good evening, everybody, this is Aman, I'm the designer for the project, hello. My video's not working, so I'm just gonna, can you guys hear me?
Sure, yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, great. So, yeah, just let me know if you have any questions. We work with the planning department on making some changes to modify the design, to make it, you know, one, one change we did was change the pitch of the, the roof, which originally was designed to be 512, because one of the neighbors had concerns about the height of the, the building, we changed it to 412. We tried to, you know, make the building fit in with the neighborhood as much as we could. So if you guys have any questions on the design part, I'm available to answer.
I thank you, any, any questions for the applicant? If none, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, no other speakers, then let's close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission, who, who wants to start us off?
Yeah, I'll say, just, you know, kind of echoing what we said at the Planning Commission, or at the, the Sark review, it's a really nice design, and I don't have any issues with it.
And I think the builder was present, and, or a Realtor was present, and just commented on the, the quality of the construction and the reputation of the developer.
Sorry, I do have one question for staff. Does this have, does this building have an interior ADU included with it, because it's not mentioned in the, in the packet, but it was mentioned on the slide.
It, it does, if I can pull back up the slide here, I can show you the location of it, and I can see it. I mean, it's not really an element, again, these ADUs aren't really part of the construction or review process. You guys are seeing my screen here, it's like I'm sharing my window, as opposed to the slide, but the ADU is really located here on the ground floor, so that's why you kind of have this kind of recessed window area, it's on the ground floor in the front, front left corner of the home.
Okay. It's a, it's a junior ADU, so it's connected to the house.
Yeah, that, thank you, that, that was the question I had.
Mr. Chair, if I could just provide clarification, while the, the use of an ADU is not subject to your review, the overall building that is contained is, so the design of this is still in your purview.
Sure, thank you. Any other, I guess I'll just say that I, I like the, the second story, the way they did that, I think that's a really nice touch, I think it's a nice looking building, and I didn't have any issues with it myself, so. Anybody else?
Yeah, having seen the ADU, you know, junior ADU attached, I thought it was appropriate, it fits the form, it doesn't look abnormal, kind of gets combined in the overall architecture. I, I'm, and it's straightforward, and I approve that the project does this.
I'll throw in that, having biked around the area, this looks like part of the gradual evolution of that neighborhood, from being single-story houses to two-story houses, the smaller second story, and usually an attached or interior ADU. It seems to fit right in with that, that evolution, and I see no, no problems with it, and I appreciate, I believe the applicant is planning to plant three more trees than required, which I appreciate, I, I have no objections to this.
Anybody want to make a, try a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a site and architectural review permit, PLN-2020-29, to allow for the construction of 3,904 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on property located at 1508 Teresa Avenue.
There a second?
I'll second.
Corinne, can we, we have a motion and seconded, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Ying?
Aye.
Colville?
I abstain.
Rivlin?
Yes.
Zissler?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ostrowski?
Aye.
Mayor Craig?
Aye. So that motion passes, congratulations to the applicant, good luck with your project.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So for item number two, then, that's the one I gotta recuse myself, so I'll just stop my video and my audio, and Commissioner Ostrowski, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, so this is a public hearing to consider the application of Starbright School for a modification, PLN-202096, to a previously approved conditional use permit, PLN-2018-262, to allow private elementary school instruction in association with an existing commercial daycare center, Starbright School on property located at 1806 West Campbell Avenue, in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. And our planner is Stephen Rose.
Actually, it's me.
Oh, sorry, Daniel, apologize.
Not, not a problem, good evening, let me switch over to my PowerPoint presentation. So we do have an application for a conditional use permit modification, to modify the CEP for the Starbright School, to allow elementary school activity within that existing commercial daycare center. The project site is the 12-acre Kirkwood Plaza Shopping Center, located at the southwest corner of West Campbell Avenue and Santa Wasquino Road. The Starbright facility is located on the westerly side of the property, as shown here. This is a C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zone property. The current conditional use permit that was last approved by the Planning Commission on November 17th, 2018, formalized several additional supporting land use activities to an existing commercial daycare center that had previously been approved with a 100 and child, 180 child maximum capacity. That approval now also allows a community cultural recreation center, a public assembly use, a tutoring center, studio activity, as well as late-night janitorial services. The proposed application would modify that existing conditional use permit to allow elementary school activity in conjunction with the existing daycare, utilizing the existing classrooms and playground facilities. The applicant is seeking the additional activity due to the impact of the COVID pandemic, and the the struggling nature of daycare businesses at the current moment. However, there is no proposed increase to the overall maximum 180 capacity for children. The applicants are basically asking that the, up to 50% of that approved capacity be allowed for school enrollment versus daycare enrollment. As shown on the table here, that would allow some flexibility between elementary school aged children and daycare aged children, up to a point where that's 50/50, based on their operational needs, again, never exceeding the current 180 maximums currently provided. Staffing as, as approved by the current conditional use permit would also remain unchanged. The other operational requirements imposed by the Plan Commission two years ago would also remain in effect, so operational hours, drop-off pickup activity, number and capacities of classrooms, existing playground facilities, and usage of the multipurpose room would also all remain unchanged with this proposal. And so staff is recommending that the Plan Commission approve, adopt the resolution approving the modification to the previously approved conditional use permit. The resolution does carry forward all the previous conditions or approval from the 2018 modification, and it also does include two additional conditions of approval. One, that requires the applicant to comply with all state and county health orders, and the other that documents that the Plan Commission's approval in no way allows an increase beyond the 180 children, and that any future increase would require further action by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. So, do we open the public hearing next, or do we take comments from the applicants?
If you have any questions, you can ask those of me now, if not, then you can open up the public hearing and take comment from the applicant.
Okay, perfect, thank you, does anyone have any questions for Daniel, from the commission?
Yeah, I have a question. Daniel, I, I might know the answer to this already, but there was a letter from, the letter that was asking for the permit, it's on page 121. It, it, it talks about conditional use permit to include school K through 12 private. So I'm assuming that, that even though this is going to be an elementary school, that that's just the way the permit is titled, that there isn't a separate K through 5, or K through 8 permit, but I wanted to clarify that.
The question, so the code does define the elementary activity as K through 12, but as with any type of permit, that can be more narrowly focused, so here, that is specifically identified as elementary aged children.
Okay. Okay.
What, what, what was the upper threshold of elementary aged children?
That would generally be considered fifth grade.
Thank you.
And, and to be clear, this would involve older children that are currently there-
Correct.
-under the, the daycare setup.
Correct.
Any other questions for Daniel?
Yeah, I have another, well, maybe I should be asking the applicant, I, I wanted to know if you knew what, what their present capacity, not their capacity, but what they're presently in terms of how many, how many children they have at their daycare facilities now. I know, I know what their capacity is, but-
Oh, the applicant, we addressed that.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Shall I go ahead and answer?
Yes, just one second, I have to open the public hearing, so with that, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take questions from the community first.
Actually, if the applicant has their presentation, they should give it first.
Okay, thank you, Director Kamoyan, okay, so we will take a look at the presentation from the applicant, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Dear members of the Planning Commission, thank you for considering our request. Although Starbright School has been able to remain open during the COVID-19 pandemic, the daycare center experienced a precipitous drop in enrollment, while the community and cultural center has suffered a complete loss of all business. Combined, this has had a devastating effect on Starbright. To continue serving the daycare needs of the community, and to address the new and pressing elementary school educational needs of the community, Starbright proposes offering both daycare center program and elementary school program within our existing facility. With uncertainty about the upcoming school year, having additional educational opportunities in the Campbell community will be majorly beneficial to the families with young children in Campbell as well, and this will also give Starbright a chance to survive the current crisis and continue serving the community. Parents cannot return to work unless they have an elementary school for their young children. The Starbright facilities in Campbell is already set up as an e-occupancy building, and we have the experience, the expertise, and staff needed to help meet this urgent need in the community. We are all living in a time of an unprecedented global pandemic. Every small business, including Starbright School, has been turned upside down to an extraordinary degree. The lives of families and children in our community have been turned upside down. But we must continue serving their urgent needs for daycare and education as best as we can. The guidelines and requirements issued to daycares and schools by the Center for Disease Control, county, and state governments have been changing frequently, frequently and dramatically, sometimes reversing course in a matter of a week. That means that no educational organization has the luxury of having its operational plans set in stone. The ever-changing guidelines require a great deal of flexibility from all educational organizations, in terms of the number of enrolled students, educational program offerings, and allocation of scarce resources, such as classrooms and staff. In light of the extraordinary circumstances we all find ourselves in, we are asking the Planning Commission to grant Starbright School the flexibility, to the greatest extent possible, in terms of how classrooms are allocated, and how the capacity between those two uses is balanced. The following operational approach is proposed, so that flexibility can be maintained, while elementary school children are added to the facility with minimal interruption to Starbright School's current daycare programs. As was already mentioned, the existing CUP allows for a maximum of 180 children and/or school-aged students.
the existing CUP allows for a maximum of 180 children and/or school-age students. It's worth noting that the existing permit already includes some limited number of school-age students. And no changes, no changes to the occupant loads are proposed or requested. Daycare and school programs would never utilize the same classroom. The allowed balance between elementary school age students and daycare age students must be flexible because the needs of the community, even in the near future, are not possible to determine. The minimum number of elementary school students in the future could be zero and the maximum number will never exceed 50% of the maximum capacity. It is worth noting that Starbright School currently enrolls students in a wide age range, as allowed, and range distributions already vary and change from year to year. So increasing the upper range of just some of the students will be an easy adjustment for Starbright School to make. Starbright has always followed a structured and balanced academic approach for our preschool students. And so operational differences between current daycare classrooms and proposed elementary school classrooms will be non-existent. The difference in classroom setup between teaching a room full of five-year-old preschool students or seven-year-old elementary school students, the difference is negligible. Thank you so much for considering our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicants?
Yes, if I may ask. Thank you for the explanation and the added color. Do you have any restrictions on the students that can attend at the school? Do you cater for special needs?
We do not have any particular restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for researching. Other questions? Yes, go ahead, Commissioners Zussner.
Yes, I know we don't really, we don't, the city planning commission doesn't have any authority over the educational aspect of this stuff. And I know that in researching a little bit, the private schools have, there's not a whole lot of restriction the state puts on them. But I'd just like to hear you talk about having the expertise suitable for elementary school students in place, even though you just are a daycare center. So I would, you know, I wouldn't mind hearing about, you know, you obviously, you need teachers to be able to teach elementary school, so.
Of course.
Talk about that.
Of course. We have a wonderful staff of teachers and we tend to hire teachers with bachelor's and master's degrees in education. So as opposed to majority of daycare centers, we actually hire fully qualified teachers even to teach younger students. We like to hire people who are highly qualified, even overqualified. So we have on our staff already for many years, we have a wonderful faculty and we have a number of teachers with master's degrees in education, specifically their degrees in early childhood education and elementary school education. So teachers who are qualified and eager to teach elementary school. It is also worth noting that we have already, we've not only operated as a daycare center, but also part of our permit is to be a tutoring center. So we've had academic enrichment programs, various academic enrichment programs in accordance with the existing CUP. So we've had experience working with school-age children, grades 1 through 5, that have come into our facility for after-school programs, for academic programs, for math, for languages, for all kinds of activities. So that's where our experience comes from. So we're not, you know, just starting from zero, having only dealt with preschool. But no, we've had kindergarten students and we've had school-age students in a limited capacity, but that gives us experience. And we've had this experience running an educational facility for many, many years.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions for the applicant before we move on to the community questions? Okay. Great, thank you. Are there any questions online from the community? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Who would like to start off the discussion?
I'd like to open by saying I'm aware that our local businesses are struggling and I appreciate Starbright making an effort to adapt to the situation as well as providing what seems like a needed service here. I don't initially have any particular objections. It looks like they'll be providing a very similar service, so it won't really create much of a change in the outward use of the building.
No, I have to echo Commissioner Bookbinder, great initiative by the school or Starbright. So wish them well. I think it's very much needed in the community. Lot of families where both parents work, so it's tough for them. So I'm in support.
Great, thank you.
I have another comment. Yeah, I actually have been by that area quite often and I actually visited it recently. It's a really nice building and it looks like, I haven't been inside, but the outdoor playground area, considering the constraints that you have, it looks quite nice and the parking seems to be sufficient. The only other question I would have, maybe from the planner, is in terms of, there's a difference between drop-off of daycare students, I think, and maybe elementary school students. And so my question would be, you know, that's on a major artery. You know, there's two entrances to the parking lot. Have you ever experienced any problems with backup from drop-off and would you anticipate that in the future? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Was that a question to me? Should I answer that? I'm sorry.
No, that was for Planner Fama.
Oh, okay.
Daniel, what was your response? I'm sorry, I didn't.
The city has not received any complaints regarding the pickup or drop-off activity.
Yeah, I think Commissioners Zussner, you know, one of the things that we've looked at with this school over the years actually is that the drop-off pickup is appropriately marked. You know, this school is within a greater parking lot. So once vehicles are able to enter this bass sea of concrete, if you will, they can maneuver to those areas really without issue. As Daniel pointed out, we haven't had any reported incidents of traffic issue.
I have a follow-on to that. So 88 were required per the CUP in the prior planning commission review. But under the school requirements, and maybe this was covered in, I'm just blanking on it, but daycare still requires 60 and school requires 49. Do we need to adjust the CUP for this or am I missing? Is my math bad here?
But because the school activity actually has a lesser parking demand than the daycare parking, it's really a wash or a reduction.
I see. Okay. I'm not, I was trying to add the two, but it's really reduction instead of addition. Okay, I understand. And then seeing that there were no complaint, this is my commentary, seeing that there haven't been complaints about the loading, unloading and parking, which was a previous concern at a prior two-year-ago planning commission, I think this seems pretty straightforward and, you know, this is a commitment to the community and I think they've been good, you know, participants and citizens here in Campbell. So I thank them and wish them some increased success and hope they can, you know, support the community. And then I guess if there does happen to be an issue down the road, we'll have to bring it back if there are complaints, but I think this is suitable for the time being.
Great, thank you. And I'll just add that as a mom with kids, I certainly appreciate your business creativity and your creativity to, you know, serving the community during this time and I'm very supportive of the application.
I'd like to add one more thing. It's not directly relevant to this particular applicant, but it came up here. I think it's interesting that the parking requirements changed because in one case it's per student and the other per classroom when you're literally dealing with the exact same number of kids. And I just wanted to call that out and I think that'll probably be something I'll bring up later in the appropriate forum.
Okay. With that, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move to adopt a resolution, reference attachment one. Approving modification PLN 2020-96 to a previously approved conditional use permit, PLN 2018-262 to allow private elementary school instruction in association with an existing commercial daycare center.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second.
What's that, please? Who was the second?
Commissioners Zussner.
Same time.
Ready for the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Corian.
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Hi.
King?
Hi.
Louisville?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr.?
Hi.
Acting Chair Ostrowski?
Hi.
Chair Gray is abstaining from this one. 6-0.
Great. Okay. That motion stands and that concludes item number two. Thank you and congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ostrowski.
Great, welcome back.
Quick, brief. Before we go to number three, though, I gotta do something for the record. I don't think there's anybody here, but what I neglected to do was have a period for anybody to talk on an item that's not on the agenda. So I don't think anybody's here, but now is the time. So we'll open it up for anything not on the agenda. Anybody want to speak on that? Anybody out there? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. Today's agenda, which is a public hearing to consider the application of BICURE XN for a modification PLN 2020-32 to a previous site and architectural review permit, S67-52, to allow exterior facade improvements and remodel of an existing eight-unit apartment building and expansion of an existing detached carport to accommodate additional parking, a new trash enclosure and a new storage shed on property located at 201 Rose Court. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under CEQA and our planner is Naz Healy. Naz?
Thank you. Good evening. Is everyone able to hear me? Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay. Item three, as mentioned, is a modification to a previous site and architectural review permit at 201 Rose Court. The project site is zoned R2 multifamily residential and located on Rose Court, which is between West Campbell Avenue here, West Springcon Avenue here and Winchester Boulevard is here. The project site is currently developed with an eight-unit, two-story apartment building and detached four-car carport built in 1968. So here we have the apartment building, it's an L shape. The first story is continuous and the second floor here and here separated by a rooftop patio for the second floor. And there's garage spaces here and one here. And then the detached carport is here with two spaces on either side. So the proposal would include the remodel of the existing apartment building. And this would include conversion of the one-car garage into additional living area and the expansion of the detached carport. So the parking space that was here in the garage would be relocated to a new covered parking space in the detached carport. And then this area here would accommodate a new trash enclosure and storage shed. The parking spaces that, the uncovered parking spaces that were located here would be relocated as tandem spaces in front of the three garage spaces and that would create an additional parking space. So this area wasn't formal parking previously, but it does need all the dimensions to count as parking spaces. And so these spaces would need to serve the same units if they are tandem. And that would leave seven parking spaces for the five remaining units. The proposal would also include upgrades to the materials for the apartment building, new stucco and stained wood horizontal siding, compositions shingle roofing and new doors and windows, as well as other accent materials like railing and fencing. The carport expansion would maintain the existing roof form and materials would match the main building. Okay. I should have a slide here that includes our recommendation. I apologize. But staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a modification to a previous site and architectural review permit. Thank you.
Thanks, Naz. Are there any questions for Naz?
Would this be the first update? I notice this is a remarkably ancient permit that we're modifying here. Would this be the first remodel? Like the current status of it is as constructed in 1968, I believe you said?
Yes, there were no other planning applications on file for any other modifications.
Thank you. And just to be clear, the reason why we're seeing this is.
I'm sorry, you're kind of cutting out.
Audio. Oh. We can't hear you, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Naz, what, Commissioner?
I can respond.
Okay, there we go. Sorry.
Why are we here reviewing this application?
Right.
Question? Okay. So so the expansion of the carport structure and reconfiguration of the parking area, those are not considered minor changes or considered major changes, which then need to go back through the process that the original permit was approved through and that was by the planning commission.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I went by the property and it looks like it's closed down. It's not in use. Is that correct? Does anybody know?
The applicant is here during the public hearing.
It was, there was a gate that was locked and it didn't look like there was anybody occupying it. And I was just curious as to how long it's been that way, number one. And number two, I'd like to know a little bit more about the patio areas and the synthetic turf that's going to be used.
Okay, so yeah, when the public hearing is open, the applicant's hearing could maybe answer your question about the occupancy. And I can go ahead and share my screen again. Okay, so okay, this is just a site plan. It doesn't show the synthetic turf, but as it is now, the ground floor units have their own patios along the side and the rear of the building. And so the synthetic turf areas are kind of mixed in with these concrete patios and some living plant material to create recreation space and required open space.
Okay. And when you say synthetic turf, is this like the AstroTurf grass kind of stuff?
I guess when I think of synthetic turf these days, it's not, you know, the bright green kind of carpet looking things that maybe is the, I don't know, at a gas station.
Oh, yeah. It's around.
They do make more realistic looking grass.
It would be that kind of. That kind of turf, a grass-like turf.
I believe that was the intent, but I mean, if we could put something into the conditions of approval to clarify that it's.
I just don't know what the city's take is on the use of that kind of material.
We, we.
Allow it.
Yeah, we do allow it. There's no, there's no prohibition on it, but I think Commissioners, this is the question I hear you saying is what's what's really the quality of that turf? There's different grades, you know? So if there's a preferred quality, you know, absent a code that would prohibit it because we do allow it, then maybe that's something that could be worked into a condition.
I'm less concerned about because it is in the back. And, you know, if it was in the front by the street, I'd probably be, be more concerned about using something like that, but it's, it's, it's in the back patio, so. But, but I'm just curious about the use of it and whether or not there are any, you know, stipulations about using that kind of turf, but. But it's, you know, just as another side, it's like it's a nice looking design and, and if in fact it's not in use now, if it's closed down and it's in a little bit disrepair, this is, this is a great thing. I mean, it, it would make for a very nice a unit apartment complex on a street that, you know, is a good area and could use one more nice apartment complex.
Commissioner Zessler, but yeah, we're kind of asking questions now at this point. So any more questions for Naz? Naz, can you leave that up on the screen? Because I, I have a quick question and I understand that since we're not adding any square footage, that the parking is fine, but I'm still trying to count all the spots. Can we, I see the three and the three, the tandem, those are six. You got the four-car garage?
It was a four-car carport. So they are numbered. It might be hard to see, but we have one through five is within the expanded carport. Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
And then the, the six tandem, they have to go with some specific units because they're tandem.
Yes, I believe this one and this one has, the garage has access to the adjacent unit, so these two would need to serve the ground floor unit here, these two here, and then this one can be assigned to a single unit.
Okay, yeah, those are always a little bit problematic, but I understand that that's actually not an issue, but I just couldn't count them all. But okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff? If there's no other questions for staff, then we'll open up the public hearing and ask the applicant if they'd like to address us.
Yes, I. Yeah, the mic should be open. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. That's good.
Okay, I'll go. I bought the property approximately a year ago now and the property has been in disrepair for, I think, would amount to several decades. And two of the units were occupied when I purchased the property. And, but those units were in a horrible disrepair. And the other ones, I'd say that were probably not even, you know, habitable. So it's, you know, it's a pretty significant renovation and, but they're very, very large units. They're well, much larger than 1,000 square feet each. They're all two-bedroom, two baths. They have their own separate laundry rooms. I like the bones of the property. I love the unit layouts. You know, we plan on making those even nicer. When you start talking about the patios of the yards, you know, around the property and back, they're large yards. Right now, they've just, they're just garbage and, you know, weeds and, and so we want to make them, you know, fence them off and make really, really nice, large, private yards for, for new occupants. That would probably either accommodate pets, children. You know, we plan on making the property very accommodating. The other thing, when you talk about parking, we have, it's just shy of two units or two parking places per unit. But, you know, I'd like for everybody also to consider it's, it's a wonderful location because it's, it's walking distance is right across the street from the community center. And it's also just a short walk to downtown Campbell, you know, for Farmer's Market and all that. So I, I think it's, it's very worthy of a, a nice, nice renovation and that's what we plan on doing. So.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
To be clear, is anybody living there now? I biked over there and it seemed like it was like a walled off construction area.
No, no, I mean, all the utilities, everything's turned off. I mean, the people were, you know, happy to move out, I think, when, it's been vacant for almost a year now, completely vacant. So I would like to have started the project much sooner, but COVID and everything, and it just seemed like everything got turned upside down. So we're, we're very anxious to start on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? If no other questions, is there anybody else out there who wants to speak on item number three? Okay, hearing or seeing no other speakers, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission and who wants to start us? I forgot.
I'll go ahead and start.
You're a sir? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. So I think the, the design is really great. Your architect did a really nice job on the 3D renderings to really show how the space is going to be used and the, and the large yards, as you mentioned. I really like the landscaping plan that you put together. And it looks like that you're actually going to be moving some walls and kind of relocating the spaces to make them more modern and usable and open. And I think that's going to be really great. So I don't have any issues. And I think it's going to be a really nice addition to Campbell and whoever's going to have the opportunity to live there will be very fortunate because it is a bigger than average two-bedroom, really nice space.
Just say, I also like the project. It looks great and much needed and overdue and looks good. Anybody else?
Yeah, this came, this came up at SAC, so we're supportive for similar reasons. Nice development, nice open spaces there. There's some mature, the street is very nice. There's some mature trees located outside the property. My understanding in Clark's Daniel, sorry, Naz, what it is, there's no plans to remove those trees, are there?
Yeah, there's two trees, two fruit trees.
Two fruit trees.
And, and there's some bigger ones there. The two fruit trees are being removed, but there's some large ones outside the property.
There are some along the street.
Yeah.
They're on the private, the private property side, but so there are some along the street and then also a large tree in the, the rear of the property and those will be retained except for the fruit trees.
Fruit trees.
Are exempt from our tree protection ordinance.
Thank you.
Anybody?
I'll go ahead. I found this project to be the right fit. Excellent work. I think it will both improve the existing property and add much-needed housing and really review the interiors, but it sounds like the entire place is going to get retrofitted and improved. And I don't think it's required, but perhaps even consider some solar on the roofs, but that's not required. That's just a suggestion outside of the purview here. Very nice work. I'm glad you are coming to Campbell to help improve it and the the yards will be a great amenity that some newer, more modern places won't have either because they're not designing that way or they, I don't have the space. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add that I did not know that this was actually so run down, like, because I couldn't see it because of the fences. It seems a real shame to have a housing which is unusable in such a prime location. I can't find the walk score right now, but it is a, like, in the middle of Campbell. There's clearly a huge demand. This place definitely should be housing people. So thank you for wanting to get out there and, and restore this. I see no issues with the project and I'm glad somebody's doing that.
Anybody want to try a motion?
Yeah, sure. I'll go for my hat trick. I'll move to adopt a resolution, attachment one, approving a modification. A PLN 2020-32 to a previous site and architectural review permit. S67-52 to allow facade improvements and the remodel of the existing eight-unit apartment building and expansion of the existing detached carport to accommodate additional parking, a new trash enclosure and a new storage shed.
Second.
Oh, oh, bebe. Commissioner Bookbinder seconded it. Karin, so can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Hi.
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 Mr.?
Hi.
Chair Ostrowski? And Chair Gray.
Hi, so this motion passes unanimously and the planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. And congratulations to the applicant. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, we might as well just forge on to our last item then, folks. We're going pretty good here, so. Our fourth and final item on our agenda today is a public hearing to consider the application of Barbie Acton for a tree removal permit, PLN 2020-125 to modify the conditions of approval of a previous tree removal permit. PLN 2019-172 approved by the planning commission on property located at 27 La Paloma. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under CEQA and our planner again is Naz Healy. Naz?
Thank you. As mentioned, item number four is a modification to the conditions of approval of a previous tree removal permit at 27 La Paloma. The property is located off of Union Avenue, which is located here. And developed with a mobile home park. The subject lot is located at 27 La Paloma, shown in red here. The previous tree removal permit was through the planning commission approval of an appeal to allow removal of one laurel tree shown, pictured here. And this is after the original application was denied. The replacement requirement determined by the planning commission was to plant two 36-inch box, 10-foot-tall ash cedar oak or redwood trees planted within the mobile home park. The condition allowed new trees either on the subject lot or within the common areas of the mobile home park. The tree was subsequently removed sometime last January or before, but it has yet to be replaced. So what the planning commission is now considering is a modification to the conditions and the applicant is requesting a replacement requirement of either one 24-inch box tree planted at 27 La Paloma or payment of an in-lug fee for one 24-inch box tree. So as a comparison, we have common sizes that trees come in. 36-inch box, 24-inch box and 15-gallon. The, again, the planning commission determined that based on the size and the fact that the laurel tree was healthy, two 36-inch box trees were determined to be the appropriate replacement. So we have 36-inch box trees here and the applicant is requesting one 24-inch box. So because there are complications by involving the entire mobile home park and the common areas, but also recognizing that the individual lot cannot accommodate two large trees, staff's recommendation recommended modification is a replacement requirement of one 36-inch box, 10-foot-tall ash cedar oak or redwood tree planted at 27 La Paloma. And payment of the in-lug fee for one 36-inch box tree. And that would be consistent with what the planning commission was trying to achieve in replacing the canopy of the laurel tree that was removed. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a modification to the conditions of, of approval of a previous, previously approved tree removal permit. Thank you.
Thanks, Naz. Are there any questions for Naz?
All right, Healy. Remind me, the original removal was so they could change the unit? Was that the reason? Or was that something else?
That's correct. It was to install a new unit.
And, and has that been accomplished?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure if we do put a tree back there, then they still hadn't gotten their new unit in. But, okay, good to hear. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. Actually, the, the, the tree ordinance, the tree ordinance that we, you know, I'm new here, so I've only run into the tree ordinance once or twice already. But the tree ordinance we have, that's usually used for single-family homes and other places, this is this, it, it doesn't change in terms of using that same tree ordinance for mobile home, mobile home locations. And secondly, is the plan for the replacement tree to be in the same location in, on the street?
The, yes, the city's tree protection ordinance does apply to this property. As a mobile home park, we have, we have a category for single-family homes and then all other types of zoning districts. And so that would fall into the other type. And as far as what's being proposed, was your question regarding what the applicant is proposing?
I mean, do we, do we know that the, the replacement would be in the, the front, in that, on the street location? Or is there another location on the property?
I think the only area that could accommodate the tree is the front next to the road.
Okay.
And I have a question, Naz. We, we originally had the condition of planting two box trees, is that correct?
Correct.
When you were just giving your presentation, you mentioned that due to the lot being in a, of course, the size and area it is in the mobile home lot and the common areas, that two trees might not be the best scenario. Why would we have that a condition of approval originally in the same lot and position, but then now not take that same position?
So the, the original approval, it included a condition that two trees be planted to make up for the large tree that was being removed. Didn't really have any health issues and a very large, healthy canopy. So I think it was a bit of a compromise to then replace it with two trees. But I guess the idea was that it could be accommodated somewhere else on the site. But then there's apparently a board that has authority over all the common areas. That wasn't well-understood at the time at the last meeting. And so that's why we're providing our recommendation, which is to put a replacement tree on the individual lot and then the in-lug fee would go towards the city's street tree fund and a street tree would be placed in the vicinity.
Do we, do we have communications with the board regarding their discontent for two trees being planted? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, they were not involved the first, for the first application. And they do have concerns about you know, who's responsible for maintaining and watering the tree if it dies. Who has to replace it? And so, yes, they, they do have concerns with having to accommodate new trees on, in the common areas versus the individual lot.
Got it. Do we have that communication at all on our packet or was that not included?
Um, I believe I included an initial email that I received. Attachment six of the report.
You said attachment six?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you for your answer to questions.
And we're certain that the applicant can plant, can fit at least 1 36-inch box tree on their property, but they have not planted any replacements yet?
Correct. And the applicant is here this evening.
Okay, that was the question I had.
Any more questions for staff, or should we open up the public hearing? Let's, let's open up the public hearing. I know the applicant is here. So Ms. Acton, if you'd like to address us. You're on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll just read my letter that I wrote. Yeah, I'm asking the planning commission to amend the original decision due to partially economic hardship, but also economic hardship to the park itself. Before I bought the space, I went to the planning commission and talked to a planner. And I was given the form to fill out. And he went over it with me and said that because my tree was a 23-inch laurel tree, that it was not an heirloom tree like the oak and the other ones that you mentioned, that Naz mentioned. And that the replacement requirements would be a 24-inch box tree, which would be, which was on page four of the application. So I chose to buy the property. And because of the easement rules of the HTC, which had changed, this house was, the house that I removed, it was, it was a disaster and it had to be removed. And it was 60 years old, so the easement requirements had changed from when that house had been put in to the new rules that I had to follow and how far back my house had to be. So anyway, so then I, you know, came and went through the whole process. And then I was told that I had to plant two 36-inch box heritage trees on the general property that belonged to the park, not on my property. I don't know if a 36-inch heritage tree could actually fit on the front of my property. That's something I would have to find out. I can't answer that. This is, I was, this is the first I've heard of, of what the new proposal is from the commission. I haven't, or from Naz. I didn't get that information previous to just now. The park is a closed resident stock corporation, Class C. It's not an HOA. And so the board rules everything. They've been in a project with Our City Florist over the last year and been working with Our City Florist. They've planted 10 trees over this past year in the areas. They were advised by Our City Florist, Davy Tree, and also Arborwell not to, not to introduce heritage oak trees to the property. And in addition, they, and I was told that they don't recommend planting the 36-inch box trees due to the morbidity of many of the trees. And also, the young trees can introduce disease into the older oak trees, which would be bad. So the board did not want me, they just want me to replace the tree on my property. That's, that's the only space that I have authority over. And since then, I have contacted, I contacted, and additionally, the, the, the large ash tree that was on my property, you know, I was responsible to come to the city and go through the whole process without the support of the board. I mean, the board president at the time supported me, but they weren't involved. It was all my responsibility. And I have since contacted another park that is the same C corp. And they actually, the board actually does maintain the old trees. And so they would have applied to have the tree removed. So this isn't something new for this park here in the board. They've never had this situation, I guess. So I wrote a detailed letter explaining my situation. And I talked with the, like I said, I talked with the Arborwell and with Davy Tree. I was told the 36-inch tree would cost between $3,000 and $3,200 per tree, depending on the tree. And that then I would also, the, the, I don't know what you call the, what I was given that I had to, the thing that I got from the city saying what my responsibilities were, I don't know what it's called. I was also required to install a watering system, pay for maintenance, and replace the trees if they should die. However, the park runs the management and they hire their own people. So this would be a huge expense for me. I've already spent, well, I've been unemployed since March 17th due to COVID. I had to sell my home. I was widowed at, at 52. I still have got two younger kids that I'm responsible for. Moving to a mobile home park was not my dream come true. I wanted to stay in my house. So this would be a huge financial burden, especially due to COVID at this point. Because I've been on unemployment. And I already spent almost $1,000 on the initial application and the two times that I've had to appeal. I had to rent, I was renting a room. I had to delay my house being finished for two months because of the In-N-Out Burger thing. I got my, my hearing got delayed. So that cost me $2,000. So what I would like to do, my, what I am requesting is that I be able to follow the on the initial application and what I was initially told, which would be to put a 24-inch box tree in front of my house. Or that I could donate, not to the city, but donate to the park, the in-lug fee, which I think is 500 and something dollars, and, and give that money to the park because they're in the middle of a huge planting project. And I would, you know, like to add to that. So that is my request. I don't, the other thing is I was told that by the current president, that should I decide to sell the house, they would require me to sign something saying that even after I move, that I'm going to be responsible for the care and maintenance of those trees. I, I don't think that's legal, but that's what I was told. I invited the president to speak today that was president while this was all going on. It's now changed to another person. So I think that's it.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Acton. Are there any questions for Ms. Acton? Ms. Acton, I guess I'll just, you know, note that the, I think the in-lug fees, the city charges for the trees are, it looks like for 24-inch, it's 620 bucks. And for 36-inch, it's 1,800. So less, you know, far less than the Davy estimate.
That included, that included, they said for a 36-inch box tree, they would bring in a, that included the labor to, to install the tree. And then they would bring, they said with the 36-inch box tree, they would have to bring in a, I don't know what kind of machine, but you know, to, to dig the hole and everything versus a 24-inch box tree. So that was there, that was including there.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I had a quick question, just really a confirmation. I'm just confirming the, the new property has been built and, well, I know the tree's been cut down and the new property has been constructed. Is that correct?
Yes, because, yeah, because what, additionally, what happened was that I did not get the confirmation letter after my initial hearing until a month after it had been sent to an incorrect address. But then I wasn't eligible to appeal because I missed the 10 days. But then I had to start the whole process over again, which I started. And then COVID happened. So it just, you know, dragged on and on. So that's why I'm here today because now finally I got back on the docket and but in the meantime, yeah, otherwise I would have been homeless. And I got permission to take the tree down and got back on the, the schedule for the mobile home. So I should have moved in in October and I moved in December 22nd.
And the management company are saying you need to replace the tree out, out of, replace the, the cut-down tree with a new tree?
The management, well, the, the, I think they would be happy for me to replace the tree in front of my yard, yes. But if, but, but the committee, planning commission ruled that the tree should be planted in the green space. And so I'm saying I'm totally happy to do that, make a donation to their planting project that is currently going on and has been going on for the past year. So either way. I, I don't know that a 36-inch, the four that were mentioned, I, I don't know that that would be appropriate on my space. I mean, it would be fine now, but in 10 years, I don't know. It could, that, I would have to ask a, you know, an arborist if that, because my space is about eight, it's eight feet on one side and goes down to six feet.
That's probably going to be pushing it. I mean, that doesn't seem like enough space for a big tree. Just kind of based on what we've seen and the other situation.
Right. And the, the other tree, the ash tree that was there had gone under, the root system was above granite, had gone under and ruined the foundation of the home that was there. And in the original, in my original hearing, it was presented that the way manufactured homes are built, that the foundation could be adjusted if the root was going under the house. But in fact, that was not true. And the, the builder of the home was never contacted to find out what. So I think Googling how the foundations were done, I, I don't know how that information was attained, but if the manufacturer had been contacted, then they would say that, you know, this is, this is how homes are done today. They're nailed down to the ground. They're not, you can't move the foundations.
I had a question. So just so I understand, so the C corp that's managing that property, they're okay with you making a donation towards their planting, but they don't want you to be planting it yourself? Because then you're going to be responsible for maintaining it for eternity. Did I get that right?
What they, what my understanding is, is that they, and like I said, there's somebody that is, you know, from the public that would want to talk about it tonight. But from my understanding, it, the issue is the heritage trees and introducing them because of the old oaks and other heritage trees that are already there. And so what they're doing is working with Our City Florist to plant trees that are appropriate to blend in with the trees that are there. And I would like to make a donation, you know, in lieu of planting a tree in my property, it, to them to continue with what they're doing. So since last year, I think they've planted about 10 trees, but I know that they're still working on it. I planted a tree in front of my house, but I, I don't know that a 36, well, it doesn't even matter what size box it is in the beginning, except that it's so costly, but that eventually, I don't, you know, when I sell the house, I don't want the same person to go through what, you know, have the same problem, right? So.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I know we have another speaker. So let's, let's go to the next speaker. I think Mr. Coggins, you want to speak on this item?
Okay. Hi. Dear members of the planning commission, thank you for your time and effort. I'm Chris Coggins. I was president of the Paseo de Palomas Corporation. Being on a board of directors is a thankless job. We're volunteers, probably similar to you. We've been living in Campbell for over 10 years. Let me, I, I, as president, I wrote the city numerous times. I'm surprised that's not part of your packet. Let me briefly describe Paseo de Palomas. It's a senior mobile home park with 106 double wides. When dealing with the state of California, the city of Campbell uses our community as part of its statistics of affordable housing. The park is about 60 years old. About 40 years ago, the residents got together and purchased it. So now it's a resident-owned mobile home park. Unfortunately, for most of those 40 years, no money was set aside for the depreciating infrastructure. And as you can imagine, common area buildings, other improvements, streets, streetlights, sewer system, electrical system are 60 years old and need to be replaced. Unlike similar improvements in front of your homes, the city of Campbell will not repair them. This is our responsibility. Every homeowner is a senior citizen. Over 60% are women living alone. The majority are on social security. She, Barbie here, she's a widow. You can see. There have been, there's always been an income differential between men and women. Men make more money than women. It carries forward that women make less in social security. Many of the residents are in their 80s and 90s. Their career is, was a housewife. So when there's a rent increase of 3%, some within the community have to decide to either buy groceries, use a pill cutter for their prescriptions, or turn off the heat. It is important that we do not burden them with additional costs. So we're struggling to keep this park running as it is. But with that said, we do a good job. We literally have hundreds of trees. I believe that we have far more trees than anybody else in this meeting. We just had the oak sprayed on Monday. It cost us thousands of dollars. I'd like, we, and we had Our City Forest come in and the arborists picked specific trees that were more appropriate rather than the four that were picked, the 36-inch that the commission had picked and told Ms. Acton that she has to do. The property that she took over, 27 La Paloma, the previous resident was unable to maintain the property. It fell into disrepair. Had the county been alerted, it would have been red-tagged. There were rats, other vermin, black mold, and the stench started becoming more and more noticeable. Why didn't we call the county? We were concerned the resident would become homeless. We were fortunate that she moved. We were fortunate that Ms. Acton had the double wide removed. Moving a manufactured home onto a small lot is a difficult task. Our streets are narrow with very little room to maneuver. As a member of the board of directors, I often watched the installation to make sure there was no damage to the roads or the neighboring homes in the process. If that tree was left there and the way it was placed in a lot, it would have been impossible to install her home with a typical truck and crew. A crane would have been needed. The use of a crane for the installation would have cost between $8,000 and $10,000. That's economic hardship. The retention of that tree would have restricted the economic enjoyment of the property. It would have created an unusual hardship for Ms. Acton that none of the other homeowners had because the tree was, it was a misplaced tree for its location. Like I said, we have hundreds of trees. And so it costs money to maintain these trees. We do work with Our City Forest. They planted over 10 new trees based on the recommendation of an arborist. We don't want 36-inch box redwoods or introducing new oak trees in. We're really maintaining this park well. I hope you can reconsider and work with Barbie. She should not be putting a 36-inch box tree in her front yard either. She should not be putting a 36 inch box tree in her front yard either. Um, it's, it's just, these, these lots are so small, it's just not appropriate. Um, so we're asking that you reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, by the way, I do think at least one of your letters is in our packet, so we, we got at least one of your letters. Any questions or any other speakers? Anybody else want to speak on this item?
Um, I have a question for the gentleman first. Um, the owner talked about you have a tree program where you've been planting some trees. I'm wondering where those trees are being planted, if they're in the common areas or in the back areas of the, uh, of the mobile homes.
Yes, we, we have an unusual. Normally mobile homes, the lots are back to back. We have these two beautiful green belts. And so we brought our city forest and I think the city of Campbell uses them as well. And they picked 10 locations for planting specific types of trees. I forget the names of them, but they're, they're not oak or redwood. Um, and we planted them. Um, a couple of them have died. We'll have to replace them, but you know, and so. It'd be great if you had Ms. Ackman contribute towards those trees. We could, we could use that money. And she could probably put a smaller tree in front of her house would, that would be appropriate.
So those trees are, are in the green belts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I have some familiarity with our city forest and, um. At least in my experience, the, the trees are basically, um, donating or, um. Installing for free is that? The situation at your?
Uh, no, they, they charged us.
Okay.
But, but you know, they're, they're more reasonable than, than Davy Tree or anyone else.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The, the reason you're working with this arborist, I, I know there's a little getting off the. Path of our applicant, but the reason you're working with them is, is you're required to replace the trees or this is just a benefit you're working towards in the community?
No, we, it's a benefit to the community. We love trees.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
There's a, just a bit of confusion I have here. We did allow, um, like, we did make it clear at the last hearing that. At some point there would be at least one 36 inch box tree installed on the applicant's property. Um.
Yeah.
So the condition was written, leaving it open, um, and subject to approval by the director on the locations. So it did not limit the replacement trees to just the common area.
Can I say something? On the, on the, uh, on the letter that I got from the city, it said that they had to be both. Planted on the, on the green space, not on my space, not on my base. That's what the letter says.
So, um, page two of the report, um, has the condition of approval. And I can read it. Um, the appellate shell plant two 36 inch box trees. On private property within the mobile home park where 27 La Paloma is located. 295 Union Avenue within 30 days of the removal of the laurel tree. And, um, it's a long paragraph that's skipping through and then it just says that the locations need to be. Uh, approved prior to installation.
Commissioner Bookbinder, is your question completed?
Yes, I'm, I'm done with that.
I, I think I understand that, but this is a question for the applicant and maybe some other parties. Um. The, if I understand this correctly, the neighborhood C corp is. Has outreach with a local partner to plant trees in their space. But unwilling to accept trees from you, a resident of the neighborhood. Okay, could we have a little bit of background there?
They, they were advised. From our city florist as well as Arborwell and Davy Tree. They, they don't want to plant the heritage trees. The four trees that I was required to plant. Because of the introduction of those particular trees, the oak trees, for example. Introducing new oak trees into a grove of old established oak trees can. Cause problems with disease. So. I was required to put two 36 inch trees from those four varieties. Additionally, what? Uh, we, we'd have to ask, um, that former president, but you know, I, I don't know that much about the water requirements or. Or whatever of the four varieties versus what, um. Our city florist was recommending they put in. So that, I guess that would be a question for, um. Uh, Mr. Coggins.
Should I, should I speak? The, the types of trees and the size of trees that you picked were arbitrary. And so we worked with an arborist and rather than putting in two trees, we put in 10 trees. And those, those trees will grow, but these are more appropriate for the space and the location. According to our city forest than planting redwoods or oak tree. So. And that's what we've done.
So I, I sort of, I sort of got caught in the middle between the city and what the city was requiring and what the, um. Park was already in the process of doing.
See, the, the city granted a permit to Ms. Ackman. And she doesn't own the property. It's owned by a corporation and. And, well, it's a board of directors. And so even as president, I only have one voice. In dealing with, with, with this as well, so.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you.
Yeah, you've answered my question. I have further commentary. I'll save after the public hearings close. Thank you for your input.
Any more questions for, uh, Mr. Coggins or Ms. Ackman?
Yes, uh, for Mr. Coggins, uh, can you tell us what trees you've planted, the 10 trees that you've planted? What, what type are they?
Not off the top of my head, but.
This tough question. We just called nine o'clock. The reason for asking is I think perhaps the intent of, um. The comments of the planning commission was to put a protected tree in there. Um, because if it's not a protected tree, then it can be cut down and trying to maintain the canopy. So I'm trying to understand if any of the trees that you've planted fall in that category.
The, I think the tree that was removed was a bay, bay laurel. So that, that's not really a protected tree to be.
That's true. Oh, don't worry. It's all a bit unfair question at the top of that. Okay.
That, you know, that was the reason for the four species we, we, we selected. There's no more questions. Uh, anybody else want to speak? Nobody else? We'll bring it, let's, uh, close the public hearing. Bring it back to the, oh, hang on one second. We'll keep it open. One second. Ms. Ackman?
I just, I just want to ask that you would keep into consideration. Uh, my financial position and, and the, um. You know, the fact that I've been unemployed, just everything that I've said, I, I'm just really hoping that that's kept into consideration.
Yeah, I think we have, somebody else want to speak on this item?
Um, yes, please.
Yes, please. Go ahead now.
Oh, sorry, I'm trying to take a mask off here because there was two of us. Uh, I'm the, the financial officer for the park, but I've also overseen part of our reclamation of our, um. Green belts. And the trees we put in were, were chosen for a variety of purposes since we had, uh, several, several varieties of the. Um, protected trees. We have three different varieties of oaks, mainly the coastal oaks and the holly oaks. These oaks are about 50 years old. Um, we also have a one, just one ash. We have several cedars and we have a grove of redwoods and then we have eight separate redwoods. And so we put in smaller trees that would give some variety. So we chose things like, um, forest pansy redwoods, eastern redwoods and Chinese fringe. Cause they go along a walkway. So we were trying to intersperse a little bit of variety. Uh, we do have, since we've been clearing, uh, we do have spaces for larger, uh, trees that will become larger. One on each green belt. Uh, we had talked to, um, again, the various arborists and. The inset cedar was one that was brought up that is a protected, it's in that cedar family. So if it's a protected tree, uh, we could do that. Um, our, our, we were just trying to bring in a variety so that if a disease does come through, we don't wipe out one type of species. We could, if, if we had to do a different species of oak, we'd have to look for one. Um, but just again, again, we do fight some, um, insects invitation because we're an urban environment and these are not, you know, redwoods and oaks don't really appreciate. The urban environment too much. And so we're really working on keeping them, uh, healthy. Uh, so we've changed our entire watering system, uh, so that the oaks don't get too much water, but we can support, um, a ground cover underneath. Away from the oaks, but in the blank spots. And so we're, we're redoing both of those green belts now. We have one almost finished and then we have a second one to start. Uh, that's in much better shape than the first one, so it'll go quicker. Um. Yep. So every year the maintenance on the oaks alone are close to 34,000, which we do do. Um, we're hoping that some of these smaller trees, once they're trimmed, won't be quite as, um, expensive as the protected trees. But we, we do have a policy of trying to keep, keep our protected trees. Uh, and as I say, we've been investigating slowly where they go, um, where they'll survive, um, the best. Uh, we, we also have other trees that I could name if you want, but there, there's 30 others, other types of trees in there. There are smaller trees.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Thank you for.
So I'm Pat Tinto, T I N T O. Now I'm also a resident. In our park, um, we have an elected board. And the board then chooses its officers because we are a California C corporation. So we follow the corporation regulations and bylaws instead of, um, HOAs.
But thank you for the input this evening. I think it's valuable to our, uh, discussion. Ms. Tinto, uh, if I read and perhaps the, uh, Nas, uh, Planner Healy, you can weigh in. The way I read some of the documentation was that your C corp was rejecting any tree from the applicant this evening. So even if we do discuss amongst ourselves a applicable tree or, or leave it open for interpretation. Does that mean you're again, going to reject this tree installation in your spaces?
No, at the point, we really encourage, um, this is a very old park and it, it was originally, it was developed by the person that developed the prune yard. And then in the 84, um, there was eviction notices and that's, it was the first resident turned and then actually bought the park. So we were the first residential home park in this, in the area. When that happened, it became a policy of kind of, let's live and let live and kind of hands off what people would do in their own space, what they wanted to. And so rules and regulations kind of went down and people planted trees and did some things that maybe were not the, the best for the long term. Of the park and that's when some large trees got put in. Uh, we only asked that when, uh. We had a lot of trees pulled out. That's why we were planting the first green. Uh, for some reason, people started going against anything that required any kind of, uh. Care. And so we've been trying to encourage all our people to have trees put back in the front on the street side of the homes. Uh, but, uh, smaller trees, just because, um. Our setback areas are the same. Some of the setback areas in the front, um, HCD that we enter to only requires a three foot setback. We require five feet, but our, our lots are capisoidal, not rectangles. And so the front will go from five feet on width to, to maybe seven feet. And the lot that Ms. Ackman is on is 47 foot wide and that's why you get a narrower spot. So the tree usually needs to be a narrower. A tree, something that would grow up with a canopy that maybe goes upward more like a big, um, big tooth maple or a swamp maple, that type. The ones that have the larger canopies, uh, do start to get too large for the setback. And, uh, if the person, that's the minimum setback. You could, you can put your house back further if you want, but it means you just have to choose a shorter house.
Thank you. I, I guess that wasn't necessarily the answer to the question. My question. You're definitely, the C corp isn't going to allow any trees within the public comp area. That's.
No, that was not, unfortunately, that's a misunderstanding. We would always allow a tree. Uh, we could not pay for the large tree at the time. There was some concern over that since we do have a limited budget and we do keep, we just, we, uh, kept our. Our fees very, very low, uh, for various reasons. And it was some concern about the expense of putting in that larger tree. And we felt that there should be some negotiations between the homeowner who wanted the tree taken out versus. Uh, the other 105 residents that would also help pay for it, uh, and putting it in.
I, I, the, the planning commission said that I was responsible to pay for the trees and put them in, but.
And we do have spots for them.
But I, I, I'm saying that for me, you know, the financial burden of that and then. I was told that, I mean, it, on the letter that I received from the planning commission, that I was responsible for the watering system, the planting, everything. And I was told by the board that they didn't want these heritage trees for all the reasons they mentioned. And so again, I was hoping to remove the tree and replace it with a 24 inch tree in front of my house, which is what I would like to do. And if that's not sufficient, then I would like to donate. Money to the park so that they can continue with the planting. Uh, program that they have. That's, that's what I'm asking. So that they, they, you know, they know what is appropriate. They know they've gotten all the counsel, et cetera. And so I would like to either donate to them or plant a tree in my yard. Right. Replace the one I took out.
Thank you, Ms. Ackman. Yeah, I think we got the general idea. Uh, any, any more questions?
Just to clear something up with, uh, Nas, if the. If the applicant pays, uh, makes a donation to have the, um. The park install and maintain a tree, that does not fit the conditions of approval that we gave them last year, yes?
Uh, correct. Uh, the condition was to plant two trees. Um, as far as requiring the applicant to donate, I, to the board, I. I don't know that that would really involve the city. That's kind of between them. What we would probably do is to. Uh, rewrite the condition to then. Have the board plant a certain number, a certain type of tree that the planning commission determines would be appropriate.
Maybe we should ask, uh, city attorney Bill if, uh. If hypothetically, could, could we as a planning commission and as a city. Require, uh, the applicant, Ms. Ackman to pay an annual fee to the. I know it's not a homeowners association, but, uh, whatever the board is called.
Um, you could, I mean, you could, but in order to justify that, there'd have to be some mechanism of assuring that a tree was going to get planted. I mean, if, if we could have an agreement that showed that the, that the, that the corporation was going to plant a tree. I mean, yes, we could work something like, like that out, I suppose.
Let's see, okay, just, just want to know if it's doable.
Do you want me to say anything?
Yeah, tell them we're more than happy to meet with the commissioner.
Can I, may I say something?
Sure, sure.
More than happy to meet the city planner and also to do that, we support maybe doing a 24, you know, a smaller tree for Ms. Ackman in her yard and then having a, a larger tree. Uh, planted, a, a protected tree. We could do the cedar, a, a cedar, and we have two places, but I would. Really like someone to approve one of those two places since it would be responsible as where to put it to, um, the letter said something about the city choosing the spots.
Okay, we got, we get the general, I don't know how grandly we can get here, but that's okay. I think.
Another question for Ms. Tito. So if, did I hear correctly though, that the maximum size would be the 24 inch? Because the, your guidance from city florist and other, um, arborist was that the 36 might not be as, um, resilient.
Yes, that, that is a concern. Uh, we could, like I say, try the 36 inch, but we are even putting in the 15 gallon and then a, a few 24 inch boxes. But just a survival rate again, um, is a concern. We do, we have, our watering system is a very special one we're doing. But we don't have a full-time landscaper. We hire and then watch over. We're getting there, but, um.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, everybody. Anybody else? Thank you, everybody. Anybody else? All right, let's, uh, let's close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. I, I, we did have a long discussion, I remember back in October. Five, five of us were in that, uh, discussion. So, uh, it was, it was a tough item then, and it might be a tough one now, but anyway, who, who wants to lead us off?
I'll go ahead and start. Um, I think it's kind of a lot to consider here and, um, it's kind of a complicated topic because we're used to dealing with, um, single-family homes and, um, residential multifamily homes and things like that, but we don't. At least I haven't had much experience on the planning commission over the last three years, um, on items that relate to mobile home parks. And so when thinking about the size of the property and the space that's there and, um, and applying our city guidelines that, um, again, are kind of more designed for the other types of properties that I mentioned, it feels like kind of putting those, um, um, guidelines or ordinances on a mobile home park when it relates to trees and really large trees that are going to grow really big. Um, when we're talking here about a small space, kind of feels a little bit, um, you know, kind of out, out of place to some extent. So what, so that's kind of the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing is that I think what I'm really happy to hear is that there have been, um, there's been a lot of work and diligence by the private, um, kind of management, C corp, as well as the, the board members and what Ms. Tito explained in terms of their, um, thoroughness and detail, working with our city florist and Davies and, and the third arborist and thinking very, um, carefully about how to maintain their existing trees and how to introduce new trees that are going to be compatible size-wise, but also, um, you know, pest-wise so that the new trees don't contaminate the existing trees with pathogens and then ultimately kill those trees. So, you know, I think the work and the diligence that's been done, um, by those teams, you know, far exceeds anything that I think we could do as a planning commission in terms of guidance and about what kind of tree or what size tree. And so what I would recommend is we take the guidance, um, that I've heard Ms. Tito share from, from those, um, uh, arborists. And if they are recommending a twenty four inch or smaller, um, then that's what I would, um, propose that we go with in terms of, um, planting. So that, you know, we had originally said we'd like two trees planted. I think we can continue to, you know, one or two trees, um, would be fine. I think they should be twenty four inch or smaller. And I think that we should leave it up to the, the, the S corp and, and, and the board to figure out where are the best place to, and the, and the owner, um, where the best place to plant those is, whether it's on her property. Um, it sounded like that was a suggestion. Um, but it shouldn't be a large heritage tree because we don't want to be in this situation in thirty years from now. Um, but it sounded like there was space. Um, and clearly the community is very supportive or, uh, you know, has a strong desire to, um, plant and maintain those trees. So I don't have any concerns about them being cut down if they were not, um, protected trees. So, um, I would say, you know, the applicant's asking to contribute to that, uh, that fund to plant those trees. I think that's an excellent idea. It's contributing to, um, you know, a, a group of people who have really thought diligently about what the best thing to do is in terms of trees there.
Commissioner Strasky, I like your comments. I think it's in the right path. However, and maybe Nas can weigh in a little bit, but I feel like we're here. And, and maybe it related to the species and sizing, but we're here because the C corp denied the applicant's wishes or, you know, the, uh, planning commission saying that they weren't gonna be told what to do. Now, I, I did hear from some of the, the board of directors that they would participate. But, uh, I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any ability to tell the corp what to do. And then we'd be back here in a few more months. Does staff have any feeling on that? I felt like one tree in her yard and the in lieu fee. I, I wouldn't mind it going to that community, but it seems like they're making it hard to prove or confirm that we're going to be able to do this.
Um, so I think part of the reason why we're here is because the board wasn't involved the first time. Um, it sounds like they are okay with accommodating some new trees, but just not at the size, um, or the species that was, that were identified as the conditions. So, um, it really wasn't a process to make any changes to the conditions, except for what we, uh, created, which, which was this new tree removal permit, but, um, I mean, if they are willing to, um, I guess have the conditions and requirements apply to the common areas, then the planning commission could, um, that, that could be the replacement requirement is to plant the trees in the common areas. But, uh, as far as, uh, leaving uh, the locations up to owners, um, we could do that. I would just recommend that, um, it does be subject to approval by staff. Uh, we've run into situations where, um, people just planted a, a tree, um, right next to a building. Not that they would do that, but we just like to have that.
Yeah, I agree.
Ability to verify where it's going.
I think Bill, uh, city attorney is going to say something.
Yes, I, I did want to point out that we've heard from, I think, two members of the board tonight. I doubt that's a quorum. I, I, so I, I don't think we can say that we know that the board will allow the planting of these trees. That, that, and that was just the point that I wanted to make. We have no assurance, uh, despite the fact that we have some people who say that they can, that in fact, the board will allow it.
We have, uh, done, and to, to those who are watching and, and, uh, part of the public, uh, since we're on the discussion phase, if you could please uh, wait, since the public hearing is not open, I appreciate it. Uh, two, two notes on that. We do have the in lieu fee that would be proposed currently going to the city's street tree fund. I find this, uh, a reputable source to deposit the money because that's the city and they do what they do best. Uh, of course, which is we, we, we can trust where that money is going to go. If we start allowing people to decide to take that in lieu fee and, and deposit it anywhere else, uh, that does create a little bit of a loophole that, that could cause some concerns at some point because who knows where that money goes, uh, and what kind of clerical, uh, fees and compensation that end up paying for. Uh, just one of the thoughts regarding that, um, of course, we take into consideration the economic hardship. But it does make it very difficult when we have them, uh, bringing up the economic hardship, but then saying, yes, but uh, we'll gladly have her give us the money instead of giving to the city because it'll take care of our trees. Again, we understand the situation at hand. We need to take care of trees, uh, and, and of course figure out the best situation here, but uh, those are just, uh, two thoughts I have regarding the replacing the in lieu fee, uh, as going from the city's tree fund to, uh, the, the C corp.
Yeah, I, if I can say a few words, I, I, I agree with sentiment. The vice chair was, was mentioning about the, uh, the management company. It sounds like they're doing, um, a lot of work to maintain the canopy and a, a nice environment there. Um, however, I think to Commissioner Colville and Rivlin, um, maybe we want to try and keep this simple. Um, so maybe go with a, with a requirement of replacing the, the tree with a twenty four inch tree, um, which I think sounded acceptable and then paying a thirty six inch in lieu fee to the city because per Colville's and, and Rivlin, the commissioner of Rivlin's point. Now that's, I think that's within the remit of the city. It's something that we, we would do and, and check and avoid complication.
Um, I'd just like to jump in here. Um, just, uh, to, um, to share Strass's point, this seems like in some ways analogous to the way in which we have uh, neighborhood plans that we devolve power to neighborhoods to make certain decisions about how they can run, be run best. I know this is not structurally the same as that. Am I frozen?
We can hear you, actually.
All right, cool. As long as you can hear me. Um, so similarly, the, um, the, the owners and occupants of the park have more knowledge about how their forests should be maintained than the city does. There's also the complication of the fact that like the, the original problem here seems to be that we obliged the applicant to do things that the applicant did not have authority to do. As was mentioned, our ordinances were not really built for this. I, I just want to express my appreciation for the applicant's patience in going through this. It's been quite a saga. I appreciate that you're just trying to move into a home. You didn't even know that this tree would be a problem and it's been more than a year dealing with at this point. I assure you, despite everything, we do want you to be able to live here and I very much hope we can get this resolved tonight. I think, I, I'm the, like, bottom line, we really want to make sure that because the tree was removed, that um, two new trees are planted. Now, whatever, now the mechanism we use to do that can, like, I, as long as we can actually enforce that two new trees get built, I would be comfortable devolving that to the, to be done through the, the park ownership. Um, I'm hearing some skepticism from my fellow commissioners about that. Um, as long as we can be sure it's done, I don't really see the problem. Those are my thoughts.
I, I'm on board with that. I just, we're here again tonight because we couldn't get that accomplished in the first pass.
I think the issue was that the trees that we were recommending, you know, the arborist that advised the mobile home parks, said they weren't compatible. Right?
So I think another commissioner said it, maybe it was Commissioner Ching, uh, weigh in if I'm wrong. But that, you know, not going with the protected trees allows for later removal for whatever reason, nefarious or not. But, you know, the idea behind a heritage and protected tree is to ensure its longevity in the city. So, uh, I'm not saying that's what the board's decision was or why it was, but the ordinance was calling for a protected tree replacement, not a tree that can be cut down in eight years.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern would be if we insisted on a protected tree that wasn't compatible or would bring in pathogens, then we're kind of defeating the point of what we want to do, which is to keep trees alive and growing, right? Either you can kind of down or the pathogens can kill them. So I would defer to the arborist's recommendations here.
That being said, these are third-party arborists and while the sudden oak death, um, I'm related to the industry, we don't have trees falling over throughout our community. So I, I do understand those exist and but these are third-party paid by the ownership groups to make these comments back. So I, I have, while I trust their licensed and they have the authority to make those comments, I'm not entirely sure I can think they're unbiased.
I think the other aspect was kind of the, the watering considerations of how the amount of water was going to be compatible with the, um, the trees that are there and the new trees and kind of, they were trying to recommend a situation where, you know, you're introducing new, new trees and making sure that it was going to be compatible in a number of ways.
Yeah, I want to, I want to make, uh, I actually visited the site and I looked on satellite. Um, it's a very special situation. First of all, the tree that was knocked down, as Mr. Coggins said, was really out of, it, it was inappropriate for being in front of, in front of the, uh, property. It was a huge tree and, and there's hardly a huge tree on, there are no huge trees on the street on those properties. They have three to six foot setbacks and they're mostly shrubbery and bushes and small citrus trees. Uh, if, uh, uh, so all the trees, the tree canopies are in the common area where they have um, a huge number of trees, uh, on these paths that run the length of the, um, the, 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 the blocks on the back, black of, on the back of each property, if you would, i- if you look at the satellite photos. So, so you have this huge canopy of continuous trees on their pathways. Uh, but there are essentially very few or no trees on the front street side. It's a, they're private streets. They're very narrow and the, and the, the, the distance, the three, the three to six feet that they have doesn't really accommodate, uh, large trees. So putting in another tree that's going to grow uh, large is probably e- even a twenty four inch box. If it's going to grow, it's actually not going to be compatible with the rest of the block. So, um, you know, if the owner is willing to put in a twenty four inch tree, that's fine. I, I would actually recommend some, you know, if the owner would really just want some shrubbery or some small citrus trees or whatever that are compatible with the rest of the street. Uh, I, I would think that would be fine. I know it doesn't fit in with the, uh, tree ordinance, but that's the reason why I asked about the tree ordinance in the first place is that this doesn't really, the, the, the tree ordinance doesn't really work for, uh, the layout of the, uh, mobile home park. Um, so, you know, my, my personal recommendation would be to, um, put in an appropriate, um, a greenery in front of the house, uh, which could be, uh, a, a one or two small, you know, a twelve gallon tree, uh, you know, gallon size, but, um, and then if it could be worked out for, um, an agreement with the, um, corporation. Um, uh, I would be agreeable to that, but I, I think actually, um, what's, what's the fee for the thirty six inch that you, you, we would be asking her to pay?
Eighteen.
See, to me, that's, you know, you know, uh, i- if, if neither the park nor her location takes a thirty six inch tree, it seems unreasonable for us to be charging, uh, you know, uh, charging the owner that kind of money, uh, a fee of that amount. I would, I would recommend a, a, a lower fee, uh, uh, that's down in the five to six hundred dollar range that fits that, fits what is in a, is appropriate for the, for that location. So, uh, you know, you, you need to really look and see what the, uh, what the street looks like and, and understand that, uh, that tree that was knocked down was totally inappropriate and the only one on the street that was even close to being that big.
I, I, I'd like to, to chime in just on that point. Uh, the tree ordinance, uh, the fees we're discussing uh, are all things that have been well established in the city, including the fact that that tree was probably established before the development of the, of the unit. So to call it out of place, uh, I might disagree with that only because, uh, one could argue the house, uh, was instead out of place. So the discussions here and, and the objective points we're looking at are the fees based on uh, what we have within the city and based on the tree being removed and the replacement trees. Uh, this seems to be well established, uh, and, and something that, that, again, I'm going to pay for. I'm, I'm not quite sure. I would like more input maybe from our, our commissioners who are, who are leaning towards uh, giving a little bit more flexibility to the C corporation and this community specifically. Uh, maybe your opinions, I'm having a hard time grasping only because uh, regardless of whether it's a mobile home park, a C corporation that owned it, a single-family residential, multifamily, uh, commercial. They're all within the city of Campbell and therefore the ordinances all apply across the board based on what we have established. And so, uh, of course I respect everyone's opinion, but I'd like the input as to why we seem a little bit more favorable towards, uh, much lesser, uh, of, of the, the fee and, and the tree stuff here on that. And I think it's Commissioner Rostrowski and, and Zizer who are.
Yeah, I can try to weigh in on that. Thanks for asking. So I think originally what we approved was that, um, the applicant or, uh, was going to plant two trees on the property somewhere in that public space. And then, or I guess two trees somewhere in the public space, right? It wasn't required it be on her property. Um, so, and from that standpoint, she would be spending her own money to plant a tree on the property. To me, this is her spending her money to give it to the people who are managing planting the trees on the property is the way I see it. And in any case, it's kind of, it's gonna, it's going to be. In, in any case, it's kind of, it's gonna, it's going to be, the end result is going to be what we had articulated when we discussed this, which are trees on the property.
Well, and, and to circle back, and thank you for that input. Um, to circle back, the reason that we took down a tree was in order to get a new unit built. Uh, that's the situation that, that caused this entire thing, right? The, the old place was being torn down and a new place was being built. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, and there were changes that were, um, changes in setbacks that were different between when the original property was built and the new codes, California, um, mobile home codes that are not governed by the city of Campbell but are separate. And, uh, and therefore the property, if I remember right, had to be, would not have fit with that tree if it was not removed.
And does that same board regarding the mobile home requirements still uh, have purview over, uh, the C corp that's owned by the residents as opposed to, uh, an HOA? Did they follow the same types of rules?
Well, those were California rules related to mobile homes. So it's a different governing body.
Got it, got it. And, and all of this, again, is still, still stuff that's been considered by our planning staff who have presented the, uh, I guess, the, the two situations here, we plant just one tree instead of two and then just pay the fee. It almost seems like the discussion wars is where people want to decide to place that money. Um, a- as opposed to giving it to the city, you want to give it to the C corp. Um, i- is there anybody who's opposed?
I guess the way, the way I'm thinking is, isn't, I don't think of it as giving it to the C corp. I think it's still planting two trees on the property, but the mechanism to get those trees on the property is to work through the C corp.
Got it, got it. And, 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 uh, you're absolutely right. I, I just, again, my concerns, Commissioner Rivlin pointed on it as well too. Uh, our concern is that you give the money to a C corp and who knows where it goes and what it does. Not to say that there's anything bad going on, but this opens up that window that, that is a concern to some of us regarding where the money goes, how it's spent. Uh, so that, that's a sticking point for some of us.
I think let's take a, I mean, we're going down.
Let me weigh in real quick, Mr. Commissioner Rivlin. Cause I didn't, I, I know we had a long discussion last October on this and, uh, and, you know, and I, and I did, of course, I did look at the site then and, and now, and I'll tell you, if every site in Campbell was like this site, we wouldn't need a tree ordinance. It's, it is unbelievable with trees, which is really, really nice. But I think to kind of get off the dime, what I would do if I was king is, uh, in terms of the applicant, I would require that the applicant pay in-lu fee for two twenty-four inch trees to the city with the stipulate, and I think we have a lot of leeway on these things, with the stipulation that the city is going to work with the S corp to hopefully put in two nice trees that they want in that location. I think it's, I think it's relatively simple. Uh, I don't think we need to require that, that Ms. Ed can uh, replace a tree on her site. Those sites are very tiny, very hard to put in. I think we're still get, we're still getting two trees for one, obviously smaller than the beautiful tree that was there before. Uh, and they'll probably get it on that site. They've got a great site for trees and we're really, uh, loosening up that way. We're giving her a little bit break on the price by going with the twenty-four inch trees, which apparently are better than the thirty-six inch trees in this location anyway. So, uh, it seems to me that that might be a way to get, to get, uh, get a motion on this thing, but.
And, and to confirm, you're, you're suggesting that we don't have to plant any specifically. It would be just two in-lu fees, uh, for two twenty-four inches. That would go to the city and then, of course, uh, director, uh.
And if they don't work out with this, then the city can put them wherever, but I, I assume that they could work. It sounds like something will work out with this.
Does this, does the city have a avenue to do that? Take the in-lu fees through the city into this location? This is private property.
It is through our public works department. Um, the, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I know that in general, when money goes to, uh, through the in-lu fees, it's for city street trees on public property.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If it, if there's a way to do it on private property, I, I'm not familiar with that. Um.
I have a. Based on, uh, Chair Cray, uh, you know, I'm starting to think that it's too difficult to make the C corp do this or hope that they'll do this without additional feedback or follow-up. So I'm, I'm supportive of Chair Cray's in-lu fees. It does make sense that any tree would be inappropriate in the front of the applicant's home because it will just be back here in thirty-five years, whether it's with the applicant or a, a new homeowner. So the, the, either, i- it's a shame that we couldn't have those trees planted in the C corp space. I think that's where the original direction was. I'm reading the background and the condition of approval was two thirty-six inch boxes within the park, which got rejected because the owners didn't like their species, which is a shame. But, you know, so now we're here with the applicant who's been taken through the wringer. So I, I'm starting to follow your thoughts, Chair Cray.
Uh, this would, uh, to, to circle back, this, this would not even guarantee, of course, that, uh, these trees end up anywhere near the property. Just clarifying that at this point, with this new development, you're, you're saying that we could just have the money go to the, the tree fund that we have to the city? And that would be that. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. It's unfortunate. It really seems like we could have, this could have all been put to bed a long time ago if the C corp had been, um, more, you know, congenial to this process. But it seems like the, the legal ease got this stuck. So unfortunately, um, yeah, just to, to ensure that the city gets the trees in our, you know, region and the applicant's able to meet the conditions of approval, that seems to be the best path forward. Whether it should be twenty-four or thirty-six, I, I guess we could debate that further.
I, I agree with that sentiment and I would second the motion that had that in it.
And the idea of twenty-four is that that's what would be better on this site. So I, I don't think, I don't think it hurts us to put in a motion that we would like the city to, if possible, work with this private S corp and replace those trees on the S corp's property.
I don't, I don't think we could do that, the Chair Cray. I think we established that we can't.
Maybe we could ask staff to place them near on public property within the kind of district that we're working, you know, off of.
Built on his camera. Let's see.
I, yes. Um, we, we cannot use public funds generally for, uh, to plant trees on private property. Those would be trees that would go on public property. If we take the in-lu fee through the city.
Got it. So again, it's a shame that the trees can't be replaced in, uh, the property, but at least it would be within the city, like you said, Commissioner Rivlin. Uh, and again, I think it would be the easiest, uh, way to, to move on and, and, and take the headache out of the poor homeowner here. Uh, so I'd, I'd agree with the, the direction we're going with this.
And, and how much, how much is the fee for the twenty-four inch each?
Six hundred and twenty.
Okay, so she'd be paying a twelve hundred and four.
Which would be much less than the eighteen hundred plus the additional box tree. So I think that would be a, a, a victory if you were to look at it in a certain light that way.
And let me make one up more observation for the record. Um, we, in many cases, we get hung up on the size, but twenty-four inch boxes do grow in five to ten years into thirty-six inch boxes. And five to ten years later than that, sixty inch boxes. And five to ten years later than that, even bigger, you know? So we eventually will get the sized tree, um, somewhere on a city street or a park.
Want, want to try a motion, uh, somebody then?
Who has the most, uh, complete version of this in their head?
Rivlin does. He nailed it.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna kind of stumble through this, but I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to PLN two, two, uh, twenty twenty dash one two five to the conditions of approval that call for two in-lu fees to replace twenty-four inch boxes, uh, to the city of Campbell. Uh, previously approved tree removal permit, PLN two zero one nine dash one seven two associated with this installation of a mobile home.
Yeah, and I, I would, uh, recommend you also want to strike, um, finding number ten under the evidentiary findings, which references the thirty-six inch box.
Striking finding ten of any language referring to thirty-six inch box trees.
I second that.
Okay, Corinne, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Buckbinder?
Hi.
Ding?
Hi.
Oldville?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Mister?
Hi.
Vice Chair Ostrowski?
Hi.
Eric Cray?
Hi. Okay, so that motion passes unanimously and the, uh, let me see now. I think the action of the planning commission is final unless appealed and, uh, let me make sure. Yeah. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed and writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Thank you very much.
So, the Mr. Chair, just for the record, uh, Barbie, you, you, you've now received the notice that if you are not happy with this decision, you have the ability to appeal. That's typically stated at, at the end of every item.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. That item is closed. So now we're, uh, at the, uh, Community Development Director's report. Mr. Kamoya?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, you have the report. Uh, if you want me to elaborate on any item, please ask. Otherwise, it's been a, been a long meeting.
I have, uh, two quick questions, uh, or statements anyway. One is, uh, because we, uh, it seems like it's hit and miss in terms of getting our Zoom notices for the meeting. So I don't know if Corinne or somebody can make sure that everybody gets the Zoom notices because it's, uh, it, it's definitely, ever, ever since we started, it's been, I think about fifty-fifty, I get them and I don't. So, uh, the other thing I will point out is, I don't know when it's going to come up to us, but I see that officially Frye's is gone. Frye's is closing down. So, uh, I don't know when that's going to come up. Development, but.
Yeah, it was a matter of time and we, we've been monitoring it. Uh, and we've been speaking with the property owners over the course of several years. They've been engaged in the general plan update process. Yeah, we, you know, we, there's been a lot of interest on that property. I mean, even Walmart wants to locate there. So we'll, we'll, we'll find out a little bit more what the property owner's interests are. Uh, but nothing's been proposed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe in and out, we'll come back, huh? I'm joking. That, that same intersection.
More space.
Yeah, I guess we have more other items and we'll, we'll close the, uh, planning commission meeting on November tenth until we resume. Our next meeting is November twenty-fourth and everybody stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, uh, Commissioner Ching, you didn't get to do all four.
Yeah, I know. But it's difficult. I, I let, let you do the difficult one.